Meeting on order, please. This joint means salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Del Rossi.
Is she on Zoom or?
Ms. Doherty.
Here.
Ms. Delay.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Chow.
Here.
Ms. Chin. Six present and one absent.
Good evening to everyone and thank you all for being here tonight and to all the public watching out there. Today, this is a special meeting come to order to discuss the evaluation. And before we start, I want to thank Ms. Mon for putting together, for taking the lead on the evaluation process, get all the paperwork out, collect the paperwork back, do the data, enter data entry. You did a lot of work the past, I don't know how long, two to four weeks. So I noticed a lot of work. You did it evenings, weekends, and get everybody on the same page, basically. So I want to thank you for that. So we can start on the meeting now with the superintendent's evaluation. And I'd like to start with Ms. Mon.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chow. So first off, I want to thank, in the same vein, I really want to thank my colleagues for going through this process with us. I know that it is, you know, it's not a lot of fun, but I appreciate that everyone did take it so seriously. Got me their materials, which I really do appreciate. I do understand that there was some confusion with the instrument. There was kind of two separate, two different instruments that people used. So I did my best to kind of bring them all together in this final report. Because I did want to ensure, and as some of you may remember from some of our training sessions with MAS C, I was very committed as the aggregator to ensure that every, all comments, all, you know, all the number votes, whatever, would be included in their entirety. So I did ensure that no matter what kind of instrument people used, it is included in this final report. And I did share it, obviously, with all of you. It has been posted for the public to be able to review. What I would recommend, as we kind of go through this process, is for each member to have an opportunity to kind of talk directly to the superintendent, share any of the insights that they feel are important, you know, offer any other kind of areas of emphasis or suggestions. The superintendent would then have an opportunity to respond to each member. And then at the conclusion of it, basically, I will be putting forward a motion recommending a vote for the committee to find the superintendent's evaluation to have met the proficient standard. It is a yea or nay vote, and then the will of the body will go forward from there. So I do think this is an opportunity for members to be able to share their insights and their experience in working with the superintendent, and for the superintendent to be able to have an opportunity to respond. And then again, at the end, we will take the final vote. I would say, I did include a tally sheet that I think everybody received prior and then tonight. That is meant to be a guidepost for you as you go through. So it is, you know, it kind of will give you a number standard, but the reality is that it is the vote tonight to approve as proficient, which is the actual action that we take tonight. I would entertain if there are any questions at all before we kind of launch. I know it may be. Everyone?
Any question from any of the members for Ms. Mon? Ms. Doherty and then Ms. Delay.
Thank you, Honored, for you too, Ms. Martin. I'm just wondering where the numerical average is equivalent to under three. The total is 2.89. I'm just wondering why you would be calling that proficient. I thought numerically proficient would be three.
So as I said, these are meant to be a guidepost for each member. So as you're going through, it's kind of a way to make comparisons against the standard, against the rubric. But at the end, after going through this process, each member then has to say proficient or needs improvement. That's kind of the area we're in right now. So it's just, these are each individual standard, but we then have to vote tonight on what our overall kind of evaluation is. Does that make...? Okay.
Your side, Ms. Doherty. Ms. Delay.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you to Ms. Martin for putting this together. The number that you put together, tallying, the average and all of that, it's pretty good, so.
I did some math, people.
Really appreciate that. It's easy to read, too. So may I make, everything that we have here is, we have on record, everything is written down. And also, you know, I wonder if we can, I like to establish an operation, how to operate tonight's meeting. And I like to put a time limit, say five minutes for us to speak. And we want to speak about the overall, because everything we have written down already on each category. So I want to make that as a form of a motion, just to set it to a five minutes. And we want to talk only on overall.
So, thank you.
Ms. Delay and Ms. Mon, I know you have your hand raised. If you could hold for a moment. We do have technical difficulty with LTC. It's not broadcast live. They are recording it to be broadcast later. But let me just turn off the mic and seek advice to see the legality of this for a minute, okay? So I'm going to turn off my mic and just ask a couple people here. Okay, thank you for that short break. We found out that this is a public meeting, and as long as it's being recorded, be broadcast on TV later on, that will be fine. So we now will proceed. And Ms. Delay had a motion on the floor to put a time limit for each member to speak. For how long, Ms. Delay?
Say five minutes max for each member. And we want to speak about overall, the whole review.
Okay. Any second by Ms. Thompson? Do we need a roll call on this one?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson? Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. June? Six shades, one absent, approved.
Ms. Ma. Do you know, is Ms. Del Rossi connected?
No.
She wasn't able to? That's too bad. Thank you.
Did you get any text message from her, whether she'll be attending or be absent?
I asked him and he said she's not signed in.
Okay, wonderful. Any other comments or question before we start? Go on to each member to make a evaluation comment. No other comment, no other question. We'll just start from my left to the right. In that order, we'll start with Ms. June. Ms. June, would you like to say a few things?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chow and Ms. Martin for putting this together. I, after having, this is very loud, sorry. After receiving some clarity from Dr. Hall, some of my rates might different from, might be different from what we have here right now. Because again, it's a short amount of time that I did not have the chance to touch base with Ms. Martin. But there are some that I may have to, again, after the clarity, I understand it better. And there's the fact that I'm a little bit confused on some of the rubrics that were sent. That's the reason why my numbers is not as how I would actually rate Dr. Boyd. So that is from my own experience. So I just want to let you guys know that. Okay, thank you.
No other comments. Ms. Doherty? Does Mr. Superintendent want to respond to each member, or you want to wait until at the end?
I think for me, it's an opportunity for, to hear the feedback from the committee for professional reflection and growth. My understanding of the intent, Ms. June, from having read the notes, is that overall, you're in a evaluation criteria of proficient. Is that an accurate interpretation? And easily understood. I, too, just to get it out of the way, want to thank Ms. Martin. It's not the easiest thing. I often say, the most difficult thing in my job is trying to work for seven different bosses. And I think Ms. Martin got a little bit of a feel for that, trying to bring it together for one level of feedback from seven different bosses. So, Ms. June, that's the interpretation I had from reading the notes, is that your intent was to rate it as proficient. So I appreciate that clarity here tonight. The other indicators I take as a way to try to come to that ultimate conclusion. And again, I imagine you were an actuary at a different, in a different life at some point, to try to look through that. So thank you, Ms. June. I appreciate that.
Okay, no other comment. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Honesty. So I would like to start by saying, it was always my intention to provide a fair and honest evaluation, and hoping that it would be taken in a constructive way, that we could move forward. As the superintendent mentioned at our last meeting regarding the evaluation, he felt that there was work to be done with relations with me. And I would wholeheartedly agree, and am optimistic that we can come to some movement in a positive direction. Because, I mean, this job and this role, part of it is holding the superintendent accountable. I take that part very seriously, as you know. And so you'll see, in my, and my comments are pretty detailed. I tried to provide specific examples and observations to back up my ratings. But a couple that I wanted to point out, first, let's start with some positives, that I really saw increased, the increase in staff diversity, the increased efforts at communication with families, the increased bilingual staff. I think those are all very positive steps, and more work needs to be done with that. Some of the areas that I was most critical were my own frustration that I had identified these as areas needing improvement last year. And I know that doesn't necessarily relate to the new members. But I felt that we still have this very non-collaborative culture, very hierarchical culture, which I think it might work for the military, where you just do your order, you know, whatever orders you're given, you do it. But in an institution of learning, we need that collaboration. We need to hear from the voices of our frontline workers, our staff, our stakeholders. They need to feel that it's a safe environment to express concerns or ideas that might be contrary to what the superintendent wants to move forward. So I feel that that piece is still problematic for the district. And then, I guess if we talk in general, and I think this overs, it has to do with my relationship or his work in terms of efforts that I put forward. I think we have seen, as a committee, I had motions that passed, and we never moved forward. And I use that example of the mental health audit that we tried to get done, that the clock just ran out, questions that don't get answered. I ask them repeatedly at consecutive meetings, and then I have to put a motion on. You know, it's just basic communication of information that I think has been lacking. And I think it does a disservice to our ability to do the work together and as elected members of the school committee. So those would be some of my overall, I guess, general comments. And as I said, Mike, in the written context, I tried to provide as much substantive evidence as I could to back up those findings. And I believe I kept that under five minutes. But, thank you.
Wonderful. Mr. Superintendent, any, would I to respond, or would I to wait till the end?
I just want to recognize the concise remarks from our colleague. So, thank you. I only have you at a minute forty. Thank you. Again, in the vein of positive feedback back.
No other comment. Ms. Doherty?
Although it would be nice to feel that you actually heard some of what I said. And I'm assuming that you've read my comments and know my specific concerns about motions and questions. And in the spirit of really, if you really mean that you want to work better together, I would like some acknowledgement of what you're hearing from me, or where you feel that we could do better.
Heard, noted, all of the above.
No other comment. Ms. Delay?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just want to say that a district this size, and it's not that easy to manage, the schools. We, in the past, we have so many superintendents turnover. And for Dr. Boyd, I think he is a very smart person, whether you like it, like him or not. But I know one thing, everybody thinks that you are a very smart person. So, but for me, I think you are very smart. You know how to handle difficult situations. I think that you have done a great job collaborating with stakeholders. We have, you have to work with not just seven school committee members, but you also have to work with other important members in the community. And I think you gained your respect. I think they think that you are very capable. One thing that I, even though I don't blame it on you, but I think we still need to work on diversity of staff. I think that still, we're very far behind. We have only 7% of the diverse, of staff who has diversity background. And I know it's not anybody's fault that it is that way. It's just the availability of the staff that we hire. We could only hire that many. So I hope that we could make some plans to increase that, whether to tap into the members of the community here in the city, entice them to get into the education. So, overall, I like what you have done. And I wish that I could grade you all exemplary. But there are some things that I didn't grade you that way. And maybe that is something that we need to work on. So next time, you get all exemplary from me. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I think our entire staff and organization sets an expectation for themselves of providing an A product and meeting the highest of expectations. So thank you, Ms. Delay. I would concur. I think our data points are showing progress. I think you're citing the baseline data, not the progress data that was achieved. But I think we all concur that we have a long way to go in terms of ensuring that our staff reflect the students in front of them. And we're committed to that, as I mentioned on July 20th. So thank you, Ms. Delay.
No other comment. Ms. Mon?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think along the same lines, I included within my evaluation, my comments, some recommendations moving forward. Key things I'd just like to kind of highlight would be, I do think that, you know, in terms of communication in general, I think your communication with the committee, I think there are certainly times when we get, you know, our reports, that I find the backup documentation to be kind of a raw data dump, which is not necessarily helpful. I do think there is a, certainly a fine line between executive summary and raw data. And I think that I'd like for us to be able to, moving forward, be able to fine tune the kind of documentation that we're receiving. So I think that that's something we could work on, you know, in terms of ways to improve in the future. The other kind of area around communication is, you know, I would agree, too, that from many different stakeholders, both starting with, you know, with internal, from teachers and administrators, from external, from other organizations that work very closely with the school department. And it's something I brought a specific focus to in here. I do feel like we have done a much better job of getting information out, of getting it out in a variety of ways and a variety of languages. And I think that is to be applauded. I think that's very important. I do think that we have work to do in terms of being able to listen and elicit information back in and allowing it to actually change core, change our course. Because I do think there are times when feedback comes back in, but it's really not, it doesn't have the import that actually changes the direction we're moving in. And I think that speaks, you know, in some way to Ms. Doherty's concerns as well, that it's not enough just to kind of give people the opportunity to speak. The secret sauce is when you listen, and be able to listen to what is being said, and be able to implement change based on it. So that's something that I think really would be an area of focus and opportunity for improvement as we move forward. Those are kind of the key things for me. And again, I, everyone's very welcome. But thank you all for all your help in getting this work done. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I appreciate that. Ms. Martin and I have a good many conversations. The community may not recognize, Ms. Martin was the first committee member I met by virtue of the, her assigned role within the superintendent search committee. So this is an interesting iteration with her being the personnel chair. We've had disagreements, but we've always found a way to make them productive disagreements. And you've been true to the person that I met that first day when you were doing the search, all the way up to today. And so I just want to recognize that. Understood, noted. Appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
No other comment. Ms. Thompson?
This is going to be hard for me to keep it to five minutes, but I will do it. All right. So I will say, first of all, what an interesting thing to be evaluated during a pandemic. So thank you for driving this district through a situation that none of us could have prepared for, and none of us really knew how to navigate. So that's the first thing I'll start off by saying. You know, overall, my comments are in, are in what I, but I will say, I would love a .5 system moving forward. I think the whole number system is chaotic. And there were so many times that I wanted to give you that .5, but I didn't know where to land. So what I will say is, while I think that you're doing a great many things very well, and I think that that is something that is evident, I still have very serious concerns with the gaps in the Latinx population. That is really, really something that, you know, I think we have to focus on. And I can't say it's an entirely you thing, but whereas you are leading the district, that is something that I, you know, I have to say is a really important focus point for me. I also think that, just in bullet points, the diversity of staff as to what Mr. Delay said, also really important because it does need to reflect, this is so loud, sorry. The diversity of staff, I think is so, so important because it's important, representation matters. So. And then two other points that I would like to bring up are the upgrading of the curriculum. I know that there's a driving impetus to change the graduation requirements. And my concern then, as it is now, is for us to really be considering and looking at how the elementary schools and middle schools need to be a part of that process. I know in speaking to, Mr. Fiat, I keep calling him Dr. Fiat, but in speaking to Mr. Fiat, he had mentioned that they had not been brought into the process yet. So I think in moving forward and driving that change, that is a huge, a huge thing that I think needs to be a focus of yours. And then last but not least, the evaluation processes for staff, I think, need to be reviewed. How they're reviewed. We heard lots of different points about staff review processes, and I think that needs to be reviewed as well. But again, overall, I thank you for your commitment to the district. And I look forward to seeing what you do next. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. And I think I might join these two with both Ms. June and Ms. Thompson. I've had the opportunity to know the two of you and get to know the two of you prior to your roles on the committee. And I think what's been refreshing to me is you're the same people privately as you are publicly. And this is not an easy job. You're a veteran compared to Ms. June now, at this point, I think, on the committee. But when you're in my seat, in my role as superintendent, you never know once somebody takes that step to be elected, and now they're in the public spotlight, whether they're going to stay true to who they were when they were a private resident and community partner. And I think you've been the exact same person that I knew prior to you coming on the committee. And I think that goes for you as well, committee member June. And so I just want to recognize that. And thank you for your partnership, and your candor. Again, heard, understood, and noted. So thank you.
No other comment. And I will make a brief comment from up here, if there's no objection. Just quickly, it's very interesting, as many of the newer members said, it is an interesting time to evaluate the superintendent, given that, you know, I've been the mayor for a little bit over six months, now working a new to the school committee setting, working with the committee members as well with the superintendent. I evaluate this process from many angles. As a school committee, I put myself as a member, how would I want to be related with the superintendent, as well as the mayor, leading the meeting, and having the relationship of accessing, calling, contacting superintendent seven days a week, as well as how the district are doing the past couple of years, especially with the pandemic. And my evaluation come to a proficient, which is three. And that, to me, it's kind of, you know, proficient being a three, that almost sounds like it's average. But proficient is, the terminology is better than what one understands to be three, which is an average. So, but it also is an average of, from the need improvement to exemplary, that's what proficient is. So as a lot of the committee members here have put together, put a lot of thoughts into it, there are room for improvements, and there are other areas that the superintendent do very well. And I believe that they're doing the very well part, and just navigating all the schools, the entire district, trying very, very hard to make sure that, you know, the school's up and running, all the demands are met as best as possible with the limited resources. We don't have, you know, the entire resource at our disposal, from financial to material to human resources. So that's why you could never achieve true exemplary, you know, because you are limited by external factors as well. And as, you know, every person, every leader do have limits themselves as well. So, you know, not area, just as much as the superintendent is doing well, have intention to do well, but you could not reach that exemplary as well. So that's why there's also some evaluation for need improvement. And as many of the super, many of the committee members have mentioned, you know, I think communication, and I would like to see better communication, especially in the chamber, because this is where we witness one another. I know there's communication through individual contacts, whether we're not in a chamber. But in the chamber is where we see... we see, witness, observe each other being, you know, interactive, response to requests and so forth. So, you know, you have the areas that need improvement to areas that you have done a great job. So, you know, I think the superintendent's done a proficient job. Again, just to be clear, that's better than average, even though the numbers sort of come the middle. A lot of people think it's average, but the superintendent has done a great job, better than average. That's, I have people looking at watch, so I think that's my five minutes. So thank you for that. And, you know, also, I just want to say thank you to the superintendent for really always returning my phone calls, always responding to requests, again, as best as you can, and working really, really hard to make sure that all the committee members' needs are met as best as possible. Thank you for that.
And if I could, Mayor, you were on Zoom the last time when we did the July 20th meeting, but I wanted to recognize your commitment to building and opening those lines of communication. People don't see the work outside of this room, as you mentioned, and there were a good many Saturdays, weekends, and evenings that you and I came together to understand one another, to learn our working rules and norms for one another through conversation, through partnership. And you're the third mayor I've had the honor of working with, and that's a unique aspect of our community, that within three years, I'd worked with three different mayors. And I, so while we're in person together, I just wanted to reiterate my message from the 20th of how I appreciated that amount of time commitment, which you did not have to give, but led us to a place where we could work as partners as a mayor and superintendent. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hang on. I believe Ms. Martin mentioned early on in the meeting that you would like to make a motion. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So I would make a motion that the committee vote to find the superintendent's evaluation to have met the proficient standard. And again, it's a yea or nay vote. I would request a roll call.
Second by Mr. Lee? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
No.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Ms. June?
Yes.
Five sheaves, one nay, one absent, approved.
Need a motion to adjourn, by Ms. Thompson, a second by Ms. Martin. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Motion is passed, by the way, for adjournment.